Welcome, everyone. This is the Town of Chatham Zoning Board of Appeals meeting. It is September 25, 2025, pursuant to Governor Haley's March 28, 2025, signing of Chapter Two of the Acts of 2025, extending certain COVID measures adopted during the state of emergency, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law until June 30, 2027. This meeting of the Chatham Zoning Board of Appeals is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder, persons who'd like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling 508-945-4410, conference ID 127176140, or join the meeting via the Microsoft Teams link on the posted agenda. This is a live broadcast and simulcast on Chatham TV, but despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide real-time access. A post of this, actually, we will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. In accordance with town policy, the public can speak to any issue hearing or business item on the agenda when recognized by the chair. We start all meetings with a roll call vote of all members. Then we ask if anyone is participating via the phone, just make sure that we can identify who you are. Our staff, Sarah Clark on my right, will read the hearing notice. You are your representative, will conduct the application at the microphone. Anyone in favor may speak for up to five minutes. Then I will read or summarize all letters that we receive. And then anyone against the application or has a question can speak for up to five minutes as well. The applicant can rebut any testimony or anything that was in those letters. Board members will direct questions to anyone present, hear further information, close the public hearing, deliberate, and vote on the application. All votes are taken by roll call, and at the end of the meeting, we close via verbal confirmation and note the time of adjournment. I would just ask you right now to shut off any gadget that makes any noise whatsoever. And if you have any conversations, please take them outside. And so we're going to start, like I said, with a roll call vote with all members affirming their agreement with this form of meeting, starting with David Veach.
Yes, David H. Veach, and I approve this format, meeting format.
Ed Acton, I approve.
David S. Nixon, I approve.
Paul C. Semple, I approve.
Lee Hovey, I approve.
Stephen D. DeBorne, I approve.
Virginia Fenwick, I approve.
And Randy Pardash, I approve as well. So voting today will be regular member David Veach, David Nixon, Paul Semple, Associate Member Lee Hovey, and Member Ginny Fenwick. And we will start with a motion for minutes. Paul?
I'm going to leave the motion for minutes to others today because I was not present for those meetings.
Okay, so Dave Veach, and then Dave Nixon, maybe you can second.
Sure. I move approval of the minutes of August 21, 2025, as presented.
I second that.
Does anyone have any changes, additions, subtractions?
Well, I have a question. So Paul's name is listed here as being at that meeting. Should we take that out?
I was at, I think I was at the 21st, but not the 28th.
Oh, okay.
We can still do it this way, then. Yeah, good question, though. Yep. So, roll call vote.
I vote yes.
I vote yes.
Paul? Can you vote yes on the 21st?
I'll vote yes on 21.
Okay.
Yes. Ginny votes yes.
Okay, so now we will go to August 28. That was already moved and seconded, so does anyone have any changes on that one? Nope, seeing none? Okay.
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Ginny votes yes.
Okay, and I vote yes as well because I was there, so I think that's cool. All right, so Sarah, whenever you're ready.
Application number 25-049, Elizabeth English and Lee Williams, care of Paul Muldoon, 693 Main Street, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Owners of property located at 67 School Street, also shown on the Town of Chatham assessor's map, 16C Block 66, Lot 38. The applicant proposes to change, alter, or expand a non-conforming dwelling in a non-conforming lot via the demolition and reconstruction of the roof, sunroom, and deck. The existing dwelling is non-conforming, and it is located 8.5 feet from School Street and 13.9 feet from the southerly abutter. The proposed uppermost level will be non-conforming, and that it will be located 8.5 feet from School Street where a 25-foot setback is required. The reconstructed sunroom will be non-conforming, and it will be located 14 feet from the southerly abutter, and the proposed deck will be non-conforming, located 14.5 feet from the southerly abutter where a 15-foot setback is required. The existing building coverage is 1,850 square feet, 16.3%, and the proposed building coverage is 1,860 square feet, 16.4%, where 15% is the maximum allowed. The law is non-conforming, and that it contains 11,397 square feet, where 20,000 square feet is required in the R-20 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6, and Section 5B of the protective bylaw. This was continued from January, July 24, 2025.
Okay, so I think we have Mr. Muldoon online. Welcome, sir.
Thank you so much.
What would you like to do?
We are continuing to work with the historic commission on a design that is going to be satisfactory in their mind. We're hoping to get the approval in our October 7 hearing, and then would look to continue the zoning application to a later date. Sarah had mentioned December 7.
12/7?
December 4.
Oh, 12/4?
December 4.
Okay, Paul?
I'll move to grant the request to continue as to December 4, 2025.
Dave Veach seconds and votes yes.
I vote yes.
All vote yes?
I vote yes.
Ginny votes yes.
Okay, unanimous, we'll see you then. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, Sarah?
Application number 25-076, 560 Orleans Road LLC, care of Stephen Goldstein, 5 Oak Lane, Larchmont, New York, 10538. Owner of property located at 560 Orleans Road, also shown on the Town of Chatham assessor's map, 13J Block 7, Lot G20. The applicant seeks to reconstruct a pre-existing non-conforming private residential pier. The existing pier is non-conforming, and that it is located over the abutters property to the south. The proposed reconstructed pier will be non-conforming, and that it will be located over the abutters property to the south where a 25-foot setback is required. The property is located in R-40 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Sections 6 and 9, and Sections 5B and 8D-2B of the protective bylaw.
Welcome, Stephen Goldstein, I presume?
Yes, correct. Thank you.
Go for it.
We seek to replace, as Sarah said, the existing pier. We are keeping the same footprint, the length, the width. We are not replacing the float or the ramp to the float, only the pier and the ramp to the float. Any questions beyond what's already in the application?
Do you have a copy of the criteria? Did you get a copy of the criteria with your application?
Yes, I did.
Okay, so can you take a peek at the criteria and go through some that you think are applicable?
I don't have it with me, but I know that, oh, thank you.
There you go.
I know you were concerned about the public passage with the dock. The dock does have ladders on either side and a hinged railing to allow people to go through. Some of the other points were that it's too close to the property line. In fact, it crosses the property line, and part of the pier is on the adjoining property. But that's through an easement, which you have a copy of, so we have exclusive ownership of the entire dock.
And so the one that's the announced falling pot, right?
Yeah, basically.
Yeah, so would you say that it's going to have a better impact on visual character?
Not only visual character, but also on the environment, absolutely.
Yeah, all right, great. All right, so I'll take it from here, and I will ask if there's anybody here on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak in favor of this application. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor? Seeing none, I will read the three correspondences that we have, all from the Town of Chatham, one way or another. On September 15, 2025, we received a note from the Department of Natural Resources, Shellfish Division. They reviewed the zoning board of appeals application for the pier. The proposed pier is located within map Shellfish Habitat, though the area is designed as prohibited, but the area is classified, and it does not, let's see, hmm, "An area that is classified prohibited when it does not meet the standards in respect to safe harvest for direct human consumption." Next, we have a note from Natural Resources, Karen Latin from the Conservation Commission. They reviewed the plans. The increase in elevation and extension of the ramp appear appropriate for the structure. And, let's see, "An analyst is going to determine if the height end of the structure with the intertidal zone would satisfy this accessibility, or if allowing the public to walk slightly higher along the bank around the structure would be an alternative to placing the ladder within the salt mosh." So you have to go back to them?
No, you should have a copy of the email that I received yesterday from DPP.
Okay.
We only have four feet of height, so we can't walk under it.
Okay.
And because of the property line issue, we can't allow access in the upland.
Okay.
So the only alternative is the ladders.
All right, so we have a note, another note from Conservation that was received September 9, 2025. The applicant submitted a notice of intent. The project was heard on August 13, and on September 24, the project will be conditioned to meet the performance standards. Okay, that was the key one. Very good. And then we have a note from the harbor master, Jason Holm. He reviewed the application. We received this on September 10, 2025, and found that the proposed reconstruction of the existing non-conforming pier will not interfere with navigation or oppose any public safety issue. The pier will also not interfere with any existing moorings within the area. So that's all good. Is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak against this application or has a question? Seeing none, are there any questions from the board? Nope, nope, nope.
Only question I have is, are you not clamming in that area? Is that the prohibition?
You're not allowed to do any kind of clamming in that area because of the pollution that I gather came from upstream, yes.
Right, thank you.
Okay, then Paul?
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Dave Veach seconds and votes yes.
I vote yes.
All vote yes.
I vote yes.
Ginny votes yes.
Okay, so now we're going to do deliberations. David Nixon?
This would be an upgrade, and there's no problem with the easement and all the rest of it, so I would vote in favor.
Ed?
I as well. Where it's located is sort of at the end of the river there, so not much boat traffic or shell fishing, I imagine, so if I was voting, I'd vote yes.
Mr. Veach?
Yes, I support it. It meets all the applicable criteria.
And Ginny?
Yeah, I thought the application was very thorough from a compliance perspective. There's a lot to consider there, and it does appear that it would be a wise thing to do. It's in need of repair. It needs to be higher. The images that were shown show that, so I believe it meets the criteria, and I would support it.
And Steve?
Yeah, I think it's a good idea. It looks like it's probably a safety issue for anybody who's even using it, either the homeowners or anybody that's trying to traverse it, so I think it's a good idea, and it's overdue, looks like.
And Lee?
Yep, I agree with my colleagues.
And Paul?
I agree. We've got the input from the harbor master and the shellfish, so I think we have what we need.
All right, then, Paul?
I'll move to approve the application as submitted. What's the arrangement that you have with your neighbor about when you're going to do construction and so forth?
I have no arrangements as of now. We do have the right to cross through the property, both from their driveway and from my property, for access, though I would gather Beacon Marine Construction will be doing the work, and they do most of their work from the water side, so we probably won't even need to really traverse on the sides.
Okay, I'll move to approve the application as submitted.
Dave Veach seconds and votes yes.
I vote yes.
All vote yes.
I vote yes.
Ginny votes yes.
It's unanimous, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
See you next time. Next application is 25-074, John Andres, care of Christopher Cannon, owner of 86 Capri Lane. Sarah?
Application number 25-074, John C. Andres, care of Christopher Cannon, PO Box 201, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Owner of property located at 86 Capri Lane, also shown on the Town of Chatham assessor's map, 13C Block 30, Lot C13. The applicant proposes to change, alter, or expand a non-conforming dwelling in a non-conforming lot via the construction of an addition and deck. The proposed addition and deck will comply with all bulk and dimensional requirements of the bylaw, but is considered a substantial alteration, and under the Second Except Clause of Section 6 of Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, such substantial alteration requires the grant of a special permit. The existing building coverage is 2,211 square feet, and the proposed building coverage is 2,630 square feet, where 2,900 square feet is the maximum allowed. The law is non-conforming, and that it contains 29,000 square feet, where 40,000 square feet is required in the R-40 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6, and Section 5B of the protective bylaw.
Welcome, sir.
Good afternoon. I'm Chris Cannon, for the record, and representing John and Tam Andres, who I have here. So we've also arranged, if any questions get directed to John, there is a microphone available to him, just to make things a little easier. We began this process, actually, several years ago, and sort of got sidelined by COVID, and picked the project back up about a year ago, not quite. And projects basically remain the same, which is, we were looking to actually add a bedroom and an art studio. And the house was, has always been a four-bedroom house, however, a den that's always been used as a den with five-foot glass doors is apparently the fourth bedroom that currently exists. So our idea is to take away that's, the ability of that to be considered a bedroom and relocate to a new bedroom on the first floor in the addition. I know that in the correspondences, the health agent has said that we would have to open that to six-foot wide opening without doors, and, you know, we're willing to do that, but I'd also like to discuss with her whether or not a deed restriction would be possible, knowing that shortly down the line, we're going to be coming to sewer-ing the house, and the potential there comes quickly to petition for a fifth bedroom. So we would ask that, you know, that be open for discussions with the health agent. So the, you know, basic gist of this is really just to add a bedroom at the first floor level, and up above that would be a, an art studio and laundry, and at the ground level, we would have an extended garage area. Within the existing house, as a result of John's unfortunate need to use a wheelchair, we're going to add an elevator inside the house. So that sort of created us, a need for us to push the width of this addition a little bit more than what we had originally done. We originally had 16, and I think it's now 18 feet, so. So what we're looking to add on the ground is 414 square feet of added coverage. So the coverage will go from, as Sarah said, 2,211 up to 2,630 square feet, where 2,900 is permitted. So let me get to the criteria, the adequacy of the site. Appendix 2 allows for 2,900, and so, as I said, the increase is the 400, it's actually, the increase is 419 square feet. So, you know, from a percentage standpoint, we're adding about 1.9% of coverage, where the maximum would be 12.8% of coverage. The compatibility of the size of proposed structure with neighboring properties, well, the house next door is about the same size as what we're proposing this to be. Most of the houses on the shoreline, quite similar in size, some bigger, some a little bit smaller, some two-story, some more, some less. The houses in the neighborhood primarily are on smaller lots. Many of the lots are even half the size of this lot, and so there's a mix of coverages and much more density as you come into this house. But this house is surrounded by one house next door, and then a lot of area around it, and the Oyster Pond on the other side, so it actually is quite a bit of space, and so I think it's, from a compatibility size, it will be fine. The extent of proposed increase in non-conforming nature, again, as I said, it increases 419 square feet to 1.9% of building cover, and falls within the 2,900 allowed or permitted. Suitability of site, including not limited to impact on neighboring properties or natural environment, including slope, vegetation, I think it's, nothing really changes. The site's quite suitable for what we're doing. It's not in the flood zone, flood zone, it is flood zone adjacent, and, but the lowest elevation, I believe, is around 13 or 14, where 11 is, I think, the adjacent floods on the lowest, actually 12 out in the Oyster Pond, but 11 is the closest one. There is a depression nearby, so I think we're okay there. Impact of scale sighting en masse on the neighborhood visual characteristic, character, I don't think you'll even pick up on this. We're extending in the direction of all the other houses, so I just don't think there's any impact whatsoever there. Compatibility of proposed use with neighboring uses, that does not change. Adequacy of method of sewage disposal does not change. Of course, during construction, you know, we'll do the normal, typical things that one would do, the storage bin for materials and for waste. Impact on traffic, traffic flow and safety, it's a dead end, so no impact whatsoever. Noise and litter, no impact. Again, as I said, we'll have, for construction purposes, we'll have a bin for any litter. Noise will be up to you, I suppose, to condition when work can be done. Adequacy of utilities and other public services, really no change. The use of the house isn't really going to change, so they're all adequate. Visual impact on neighborhood and neighboring uses, formula business, irrelevant, so. And because it's not actually in the floodplain, I don't think the other two criteria are anything we need to speak to.
Sounds good, thank you. Is there anybody here or online that would like to speak in favor of, yes, sir, please step up to the mic? This is in favor.
I know, Brian Phillips, 374 Orleans Road. I know I don't normally speak in favor for most of these projects, but I spend a considerable amount of time in a wheelchair. It makes life almost impossible. Spent the last three days, and I think anything that he could do, you know, to help his life out would be welcomed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else here or online that wishes to speak in favor? Seeing none, I will now read the two correspondences that we have. First one's from Judith Giorgio, our health agent, received on 9/23/25. She received the plans about the addition and dwelling, to the dwelling, including a new master bedroom and artist's studio. The property has an existing four-bedroom dwelling limit, including the room labeled "Den TV Room." This room must be modified to a six-foot cased opening with no doors, not to meet, so it doesn't, it doesn't meet the definition of a bedroom as defined by the Board of Health. Then we have a note from Conservation. They tell us on September 9, 2025, the applicant submitted a request to amend an order of conditions. The project was heard on April 2, and then again August 27 of '25. The project was heard on April two and then again August twenty-seventh of twenty-five. The project will be conditioned to meet the performance standards under the Wetlands Protection Act. That concludes the correspondences. Is there anybody here or Microsoft teams that wish to speak against this project? Why, has a question? No. Would you like to speak to Judith Giorgio's letter at all or are we all set with that?
No, as I said, you know, I was aware of that, had received a copy. And, you know, I'd like to be able to speak with her about the idea of a deed restriction, at least, you know, until we can, you know, settle whether or not, when the sewers come, there could be another bedroom at that point by petitioning. If we don't have to change the construction, it is glass doors there currently and it's a five-foot glass door opening. If we don't need to change it, it seems a little silly to do it if in two years, three years, four years, there's going to be sewer and we could do that.
You'll just deal with her and take it from there?
Yeah, that's what we'd like, the option to do is talk with her.
Okay, let's see, where are we? Questions on the board? Lee?
I have no questions.
Steve?
I have no questions.
Ginny?
No questions.
Paul?
No questions.
Anybody over here have any questions?
I do.
Yes, okay, then.
Quest, the elevator stops at the first floor. To me, it would make sense to have it go to the second floor, but if that happened, I'd be concerned about the machinery popping through the roof. Is that why it stops at the first floor?
No, it actually goes to all floors. It goes from the basement all the way up to the top floor. And the equipment was sized to, I selected a company to do this that fits within the roof.
Okay, because.
But I didn't want the equipment in the basement, just in case they changed the floodzones on us.
Oh. Well, that's probably a good idea. Okay, because when I look at the proposed second floor, there's nothing about the elevator, it's just, it's just there. It doesn't say anything. If you look at your plans.
They show an elevator on every floor.
I know, but.
Right next, right underneath bath three.
Oh, so it's not labeled elevator? Okay, but it does go to the third floor.
It does, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay, which makes sense. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so the elevator goes to all the floors?
Yes.
And, let's, I have to add some levity in everything I do.
Yeah.
Bear with me. Anyway, let's see.
Jimmy Kimmel is looking for a partner.
Yeah, right, right, yeah, yeah, yeah. I can't stop, I can't stop myself. Okay, so Paul?
I think it's Dave's elevator that doesn't go all the way to the top. I think that's, I think that's the problem. Okay, I will move to approve, excuse me, I'll move to move into deliberations.
Good question.
Close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Yep, okay.
Dave Beach seconds and votes yes.
I vote yes.
Paul votes yes.
I vote yes.
Ginny votes yes.
Okay, so now we're going to deliberate. So let's just start at, Dave Beach is Ed and go this way.
There's nothing not to like here. This is a really skillful, when said and done, I don't think anybody's even noticed that it happened, basically, other than the occupants, who will be very grateful. No, nice job, Chris, I fully support it, meets all of our criteria.
Yeah, I do as well and it certainly meets our criteria and not detrimental to the neighborhood in any bit.
I would agree, it's not in any way detrimental to the neighborhood.
And Paul?
I agree with my colleagues.
And Lee?
As do I.
As do I.
Ginny?
I do too, I just wanted to make a couple of comments. I agree with Mr. Beach that the design, Chris, is really, it looks like, it doesn't look like, it won't look like an addition, it's going to look like it was always part of the house plan. It's a large lot, I think it's a modest increase in building coverage. It's outside of the coastal bank and the wetlands, I think that's important, you know, being the proximity to the, to the oyster pond. And I agree, meets our criteria and it's a very nice project.
And you're keeping up with your reputation, so I, that's what I've heard. So all good, Paul?
Only got so many more years to work, so.
I'll move to approve the application as submitted, I think probably the standard conditions would apply. All construction activity and vehicles shall be contained on-site or at a neighboring property with the permission of the property owner. Between June thirtieth and Labor Day, no exterior construction will be allowed. No work shall be permitted on the weekends and construction activity between eight AM and five PM only.
Dave Beach seconds and votes yes.
I vote yes.
Paul votes yes.
I vote yes.
Ginny votes yes.
And that's unanimous, congratulations and we'll see you next time.
Right.
You're welcome, thank you, thank you for coming. Now, the next application on page two here is ninety-one Gillis Road, twenty-five dash zero seven eight.
Application number twenty-five dash zero seven eight, the Thomas B. Gillis Senior, nineteen ninety-one, trust care of Zachary Bazinski, forty-nine Herring Pond Road, Buzzards Bay, Mass. zero two five three two. Owner of property located at ninety-one Gillis Road, also shown on the town of Chatham's assessor's map, four B., block three, lot CG four. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change a conforming dwelling in a nonconforming lot via the relocation of the existing cottage and construction of a new dwelling. The proposed dwelling will comply with all bulk and dimensional requirements of the bylaw, but is considered a substantial alteration and under the second except clause of section six of Mass. General Law, chapter forty A, such substantial alteration requires the grant of a special permit. The existing building coverage is one thousand six square feet, five point four percent, and the proposed, proposed building coverage is two thousand seven hundred sixty-seven square feet, fourteen point eight percent or fifteen percent is the maximum allowed. The lot is nonconforming and that it contains eighteen thousand six hundred forty-six square feet of buildable upland, where twenty thousand square feet is required in the R. twenty zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, chapter forty-eight, section six, and section five B. of the protective bylaw.
Welcome.
Welcome, thank you. For the record, Zachary Bazinski, professional engineer, bracket engineering, here this afternoon on behalf of the applicant, Billy and Kate Shell. As mentioned, project site is ninety-one Gillis Road, existing developed, single-family house lot. The existing house on the property was constructed in nineteen twenty-four and the property in its current shape was laid out on a plan in nineteen thirty-six, all prior to zoning. So initially, we had reached out to building department, talked with staff about the project. We thought we had a buy right project initially. We do meet all the bulk and intensity requirements with this. We'd done some research on some of the neighboring homes in the area and found out that because we have the existing nonconforming lot with an existing structure, we triggered the requirements under forty A., section six, and then sections five B. under the local bylaw. So as mentioned, they're looking to take the existing structure from the property. They're going to be maintaining it and actually moving it across the street onto a vacant lot. The applicant has worked with Ryder Wilcox and gone through the historic commission and was granted permission through that. We're then going to be replacing it with a new structure. As mentioned, we'll meet all side yard, front yard setbacks, all bulk and intensity requirements. There is a coastal bank and flood zone on the plan south of the lot. New building will be sited fifty-one feet or outside of the conservancy district. We recently, as of yesterday, went through the conservation commission. They closed the public hearing, subject to us having a meeting with you guys. And we're scheduled to be back in front of them on October eighth. So again, looking to rebuild a new three-bedroom house on the lot, currently comprised of a three-bedroom structure. New house will be serviced by a new Title V septic system. That's been sited on the highest part of the lot and the furthest away to protect the abutting resource areas. The applicants are also voluntarily installing a innovative alternative nitrogen reduction septic system to enhance the groundwater protection and protection of the resource areas. Project will be serviced by onsite drywells, so that will increase or decrease stormwater runoff from the property. And as you can see on the plan to their bottom, the colored areas, they're going to be replanting existing historic lawn areas that were on the lot. We're going to be replanting another thirty-nine hundred square feet with restoration and mitigation plantings. These will all be native plantings, very similar to the abutting properties next door and carrying, again, protecting the downstream resource areas and preserving the character of the area. So as for the criteria, adequacy in size of the lot, again, lot was laid up prior to zoning, very similar to the neighboring homes next door and we're maintaining a single-family use, so we believe it's in harmony with the neighborhood. It's incompatible in sizes. Again, project maximum coverage is fifteen percent, we're at fourteen point eight, so we're under what's maximally allowed. The extent of the proposed increase in nonconformities, no increase in nonconformities, we're meeting all of the required setbacks and structure coverage requirements and law coverage requirements. Suitability of the site, including but limiting to the neighborhood impacts, again, single-family use in a single-family neighborhood. On the nature of the environment, improvement with the reduction of nitrogen, increased stormwater recharge on-site. The protection of the slopes and resource areas, as mentioned, we're providing the mitigation plantings and that will further protect all the downstream resource areas and runoff from the site. As for the scale and size and mass of the building, it's been designed as a two-story building in character with the neighborhood, again, meets all the massing requirements and setbacks. I believe it, you can see the neighboring homes on the aerial that I provide here, it looks like it'll be in character with everything out there and in line with the neighboring homes. Compatible with the proposed use of the neighborhood and neighboring uses, again, residential. Adequacy of methods for sewage disposal, again, onsite three-bedroom septic, IA, and source of water and drainage. Town water is in the area and stormwater will be mitigated on-site. We don't see any impacts on traffic flow, residential use in a residential neighborhood. Temporary noise and litter during construction, but we would have onsite containers to contain all that. And then there's adequacy of utilities already existing on the lot, which will be maintained with the structure. And then the last two with the floodplain, again, it's elevation thirteen, our site is up and house will be up at elevation forty, so we're going to be well above the floodplain in the area. That'll turn it back over.
All right, well, well done, thank you so much. At this point, is there anybody here or Microsoft teams that wishes to speak in favor of this application? If so, please make it known. In favor? Yes, sir, please. Wait till you get to the mic.
Okay. My name is Howard Bellger and I live directly next door at ninety-five Gillis Road. We've reviewed the plans with our proposed neighbors thoroughly, went back and forth and we're good with it.
Good to know, thank you. Anybody else wishes to speak in favor, online or in the room? Seeing none, I will read the correspondences, there are five. First one from Conservation Commission, received on September ninth, twenty twenty-five. The applicant submitted a notice of intent on July seventh, the project was heard on July twenty-three and September twenty-fourth, and it'll be conditioned to meet the performance standard. Next, we have a note from Judith Giorgio, the health agent. She received the plan to demolish and rebuild this property. The proposed three-bedroom dwelling will replace the existing three-bedroom cottage. The septic system must be relocated to accommodate the proposed dwelling. Plans must be submitted for review and permit approval to the health department. And let her know if you have any questions. Again, that was Judith Giorgio on nine twenty-three twenty-three. Then we have a note from Christina Bassett from the C.H.C. And then she said that the board found that the property is historically significant, but appreciated that the owners were saving the structure by moving it to another parcel and did not impose a demolition delay. And that was received on September ninth, twenty twenty-five. Then we have a letter from Christina Stevens, received on September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. Please accept this letter as an expression of my highest support for the approval of the project at ninety-one Gillis. I have seen the plans for the new home proposed by Catherine and Billy Kajil and I am in full support of this new home building project. We are one of the adjoining neighbors to this property as we reside on ninety-five Gillis Road. I see this project as in-keeping and an enhancement to the neighborhood and have no concerns or reservations about it. We sincerely appreciate the applicant's effort to including the preservation of the existing classic Cape Cod cottage. Again, as an abutter, the project has my support. And she gives her telephone number, which I will not necessarily need to disclose. Jack Gillis writes on September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, regarding the most recent appeals application for the work to be done at ninety-one Gillis Road, we strongly support the application. This is again from John A. Gillis and Marilyn Marm, Marm Gillis. We are direct abutters to seven, at seventy-five Gillis, across the road at ninety. We have reviewed the plans and believe the project is totally in-keeping with the other development on the road. In addition, we appreciate the effort the family is doing to preserve the current cottage rather than tearing it down. If you have any questions, don't hesitate to contact us. Is there anybody here or on Microsoft teams that wishes to speak against or has a question? Now's the time. Yes, sir?
Brian Phillips, three seventy-four Leans Road. My question about the septic tank, is that the one that constantly is filtering, like the ones they use in Wellfleet?
It's a, has a blower unit with it.
You have to go to the mic.
Has a blower unit with it and it circulates, so it's a below grade, yep.
Okay, all right, that was my question.
Okay, then.
And then, I guess, I don't know, I think it's too big, I liked the old cottage, thanks.
Just look across the street, then. All right, then, where are we? We, questions from the board. Are there any on this side? I'm going to do it that way now. I'm going to look at this side, no, questions on this side? Ginny, come on. Steve, go ahead.
I'm not sure this pertains to this application, but what becomes of the cottage once it's moved? Is it going to be rehabbed? Is it going to get utilities? Is it going to be made ready for use?
Yep, it's going to be reused as another single-family house. Yep.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Okay, Paul, then.
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Dave Beach seconds and votes yes.
Yes.
Paul votes yes.
I vote yes.
Ginny votes yes.
Okay, then Ginny, if you want to start deliberations?
Yeah, I want to comment on two things, in particular. I appreciate saving and relocating the cottage. I think that's important and the historic commission is happy with that. And then I also appreciate that you moved it fifty-one feet from the coastal bank. I know it was currently at forty-nine, but I thought that that was a nice, I mean, we care about that and I thought that that was a nice thing to do. I know it's only two feet, but it's going in the right direction and I did appreciate that. That's all I have right now.
What about you, Steve?
No, I think it's a good project. There was, you know, good effort made to, to meet all the criteria and to keep it out of the conservation area, so I think it's a good project.
And Lee?
Yeah, I agree. First of all, what a beautiful spot and I think it's a great project. And I also appreciate you keeping the cottage and relocating it. It obviously is part of the family history, so it's important to have it stick around. So I will be voting in favor.
And Dave Nixon?
I agree that the saving of the Cape Cod cottage and the new design, the combination of them is wonderful. Great, great location, as Lee said. In fact, it's a spectacular location, when you get right down to it. It's not great, it's spectacular. And all this, well thought out, definitely in favor.
Yep, and David Nixon, I mean, David Beach, and then Ed?
Yeah, I certainly agree with all the previous gorgeous spot and I know this probably isn't entirely possible, but I, I found myself really appreciating the lawn as it is now and I kind of wished that they could keep it that way, but I know you can't build a house and not disrupt everything, but it, it really, it really, I loved it a lot, kind of the old Cape Cod lawn kind of thing. So no, this is, this is a great project and I'm happy to support it.
And Ed?
Yeah, I agree with my colleagues. When I first looked at it and went through it, it seemed like it was very well thought out and so, well done.
Thank you.
Paul?
Yeah, we've seen a lot of action on Gillis Road in the last few years and it's certainly transitioning from what it has been. It's good in some ways, bad in other ways, but it seems to me this is a good project that certainly meets our standards.
And I, I agree with all that and I thought your presentation was one of the best. You identified yourself as a professional engineer and I heard that and I saw that you certainly are, your education, training background, experience was just what they needed for this project. And with that?
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations. I guess we've done that, haven't we?
We did that, now we just need to.
In that case, I'll move.
Move to agree.
I'll move to approve the application with the conditions that all construction activity and vehicles shall be contained on-site.
and vehicles shall be contained on-site or at a neighboring property with the permission of the property owner, that between June thirtieth and Labor Day, no exterior construction will be allowed, no work shall be permitted on the weekends, and construction activity between eight AM and five PM only. Dave Veach seconds and votes yes.
I vote yes.
All vote yes.
I vote yes.
Ginny votes yes.
Very good. It's unanimous.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate comments.
Thank you. We are on our last application, forty-five minutes into the meeting. And it's twenty-five dash zero eight one, seventy-four Palmer Drive. Sarah?
Application number twenty-five dash zero eight one, Herman Sanchez and Aaron Mitchell care of George Riley, sixty-three Brook Trail Road, Brewster Bath, zero-two-six-three-one. Owners of property located at seventy-four Palmer Drive, also shown on the town of Chatham Assessor's Map, sixteen G Block fifty-two, Lot P seventeen. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change non-conforming dwelling on a non-conforming lot via the construction of a partial second-floor addition. The existing dwelling is non-conforming in that it is located twenty-point-eight feet from the northerly abutter and ten-point-six feet from the southerly abutter. The proposed second-floor addition will be non-conforming in that it will be located twenty-point-eight feet from the northerly abutter where a twenty-five-foot setback is required. The building coverage will remain two thousand one hundred seventeen square feet, sixteen-point-one-three percent, or fifteen percent is the maximum allowed. The lot is non-conforming in that it contains thirteen thousand one hundred twenty-seven square feet where forty thousand square feet is required in the R forty zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section six and Section five, be of protective by law.
Welcome, sir.
Yeah, excuse me. Yeah, George Riley, representing the Sanchezes. I'd like to pass this.
Whoa. Yep. You can just leave it with the next person, leave them all, and then they pass it down. It's a, I'll let you get away with it this time, but it's a new rule.
New rule. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the lot is non-conforming because of its size, and the dimensional setbacks, particularly to the northern property line, where it's, the existing distance is twenty feet and twenty-five feet is required. That is the major dimensional where the building will go over the recorded twenty-five-foot setback. Otherwise, the, all the other construction and proposal is, fits into the dimensional code. The project is to put a second story on a single-story house. It's a, in some ways, it looks more grandiose than, I think it really actually is. It's a, it's a small second-story, less than the square footage of the existing first floor. It's less, it's less than two-thirds the size of the footprint of the first floor. It's really two bedrooms and a hall. So I wanted to, that's why I passed that out, to see how sort of that modest ranch house, the existing house, is on that lot, and if you'll put up some of the abutters across the street, we have pictures, there they are. You can see this one, the next one, which is much more finished, and then the last one down there, that they're all more substantial than this existing house. And the, on the property lines around the back, it's substantially buffered by large arborvitaries, oak trees, pine trees, ranging between fifteen, twenty feet, and the oak trees maybe forty and fifty feet. So it's unlikely that the second story will affect the privacy of any of the abutters around the back. So that, so if we could go back to the elevations there? Yeah, there you go. So in the front there, you can see the, approximately the line that runs through the second-story windows is the height of the ridge of the current building. So the addition is really just that third of the top that would go. So it's, you know, it's got some extra windows that might be, you know, not like old Cape Cod, but, but it's a, it's a modest, I think, addition of a second story to give the people, they have, when they bought the house, they had less children, now they have two more children, and they like a little more room. So that's, that's it. So if I, if you go through the criteria, the adequacy of the site, I think since we're not expanding the footprint in any way, it seems to be compatible to that. It's certainly compatible to the size of the structures of the neighboring properties. It's not going to change any of the slopes, vegetation, wetlands, groundwater, et cetera. And it's the, as I say, the scale of the proposal, I think, fits in what's happening in the neighborhood. There are very few actual one-story ranch-style buildings in the whole neighborhood. They're all either a story and a half or two stories. Noise and litter not affected, utilities not affected. Visual impact to the neighborhood, as I say, they're not being, they won't be able to see the house as much from the back or the sides, and it's not going to inhibit anyone's view, I don't think. Utilities and public service, all adequate, and I think that's, that's it. So.
Okay, then.
That's my presentation.
Yeah, well, very good. Thank you very much. Is there anybody here or on Microsoft teams that wishes to speak in favor of the application? Seeing none, I will read the one single correspondence that we received from the health agent. Judith Giorgio tells us on nine twenty-three twenty-five, she reviewed the plan to add an addition to the dwelling, including a new second floor relocating two bedrooms. The property is an existing three-bedroom dwelling and will remain three bedrooms. I have no concerns. Anybody here on Microsoft teams have a question or wishes to speak against? Now's the time. No? Okay. Questions from the board? We'll start again with Ginny.
Mr. Riley, what's the current, the height of the current house?
Oh, it's, I don't know. It's, let's see, it's about, it's, it's about ten feet below what the ridge elevation there is now, so I think it's probably like eighteen to twenty feet, something like that.
And so the height of the proposed house is twenty-five-ten?
Yeah, so it's probably, yeah, seventeen. I don't, I'm not, I didn't have it on the plan, and so I'm trying to figure it out. But I know this, the proposed building is around ten foot, which is a floor higher than the existing building.
Okay.
So I would guess eighteen feet would probably be close.
Okay. It just, from the images, it just looks, you know, a lot taller. I mean, it's just the.
Yes, that's why, that's why I was trying to say that the elevations don't give it a more grandiose look than in fact it is.
Right. Yeah, no. And then the, the dormers, I guess you'd call them the dormers. They're quite exaggerated. That's something that the client wants, this extra light upstairs.
Extra light. That's right.
That's why they don't, you mentioned not traditional Cape Cod, and this, this isn't a design hearing, this is a zoning hearing, but I just wanted to understand that a little bit better, because you aren't changing, I mean, coverage is already over a little bit, but you aren't changing it?
I'm not changing it, no. And actually, the second story is diminished from the footprint of the first story, so it's really not going to make, I don't think, a significant, the reason I think that the coverage is over at the moment was because there was a change in the way the.
Overhangs?
Yes. Yeah, the overhangs were included, and then that put it over. But before, you know, originally, when it was built, that they took it from the side, the corners, and that was well within the fifteen percent, yeah.
Okay. That's all I have right now. Thank you.
Questions, Mr. Veach?
No, I have no questions.
Ed, questions?
No, no, no questions.
And Mr. Nixon, any questions?
No questions.
And Paul, any questions?
No questions.
Lee?
I actually do have one question, excuse me, regarding the mechanicals. Any plans for AC units, condensers outside?
No.
No? Okay. No AC in the house?
Oh, there's an, already an AC condenser that there, that's grandfathered in on the side of the building.
Okay, so you're just going to keep that?
Right.
I didn't see that on the plan.
And Steve?
I have no questions.
All right, then. Paul?
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations. Dave Veach seconds and votes yes.
Yes.
All vote yes.
I vote yes. Ginny votes yes.
All right. Then deliberations. Steve? If you were voting.
If I were voting? Well, you know, this does meet our, most of our criteria, that the setbacks aren't changing, it's not getting any closer to.
No.
Property, so you're going straight up basically for this. And, you know, the coverage is a little bit over, but that's also not changing, and that was because maybe some of the rules changed along the way.
Right.
So I have no issues with this.
Okay. Ginny, do you?
I mean, I, I think it's, it has a lot of mass to it. I'm not saying that it doesn't necessarily, the house across the street, which we're very familiar with, this part of Palmer Avenue, Palmer Drive, the house across the street, the images that, and, you know, that we have here and that we know of and that we've seen before, I can't say it's not fitting in to that bottom of the, of the street, but it does look top-heavy to me, and I think it's the large dormers and the mass, but this is, that's my one concern, but I want to hear what my colleagues have to say.
Sure. Mr. Veach, deliberations?
Well, I think I see, I think I see what Ginny's commenting about and what you're saying. I, but, and I kind of think, well, you know, you could change the dormer, et cetera, and probably somewhat visually reduce the apparent massing, but I, I'm, I don't think I would go that far to say, I mean, I think it's, when it's all said and done, it's going to knit together pretty well and not look to be larger or looming more or anything than the buildings across the street that he's, he's provided the photos of. I will say, I'll say that this is one where, you know, especially looking at these elevations, these are tough elevations to read, and this is one where if we had like a rendering, I think it would be easier to see, I guess I'm, I'm going to say I'm speaking from my visual rendering of it, I guess, as a, because the drawings themselves, it's kind of, at first, you go, wow, that's, that's a lot going on here, but I don't think it's going to come across that way, constructed this way and completed. So I'll support it.
Ed?
I do agree a bit with Ginny. When you first look at it, it does look perhaps a little bit overpowering, but as I look at the, the right elevation and the left elevation and the cross-sections, I tend to agree with Mr. Riley. I think, I think the elevations perhaps are making it look a little bit more substantial than it is. I think, you know, this neighborhood is transitioning, and this is a different style of architecture, but as you drive through the neighborhood, there's, there's quite a bit of different styles of architecture, and I think, you know, at first, it, it may, first glance, it may look a little bit large, but I think it'll fit in with the neighborhood, and I don't think it'll be substantially detrimental in any way.
Randy, could I just?
Yes, sure.
Just quickly add to what I was saying, but could look, what we don't see in the elevations here is you don't see the, the ins and outs. So you have those two, the two ends of the dormer on the front that stick out a little bit, but then in between, it's set back and set in a little bit. I think there's actually a balcony there. And so when you start, when you're trying to see that and then the space, it's not all in the plane that it looks like on the drawing. Thanks.
Mr. Nixon?
Well, I'm not wild about this at all. As I've said a number of times, height to me is really when you're in the street or in the neighbor's houses and whatnot, not when you're right in front of the house, and this is built up because of the lot, and I understand that. And it's not going over in my mind, it just visually doesn't work. But to me, the main problem is the mass of this house. It, it comes across, and at four thousand, I think that was the number, yeah, the gross floor area was forty-one-hundred. It comes across as a big house for that neighborhood, and it really is. And to me, it pushes me over that line where it is substantially detrimental to the neighborhood.
Lee, I didn't go to you yet, right?
Well, you know, I know that this property has come before us, before, and it had a completely different application, completely different design and roof line. I couldn't find my paperwork, but I did watch the hearing, and the roof on the previous application had more of a slope, had more of an overhang, and that really contributed to the mass.
Yes.
I believe this one is better. The way the roof line is, it's much better. I personally would prefer to see a Cape Cod-style dormer, but this house is a little different from a traditional Cape. I think this is, is better, and I do believe that the, that this plan helps reduce the mass.
All right. And Paul, your thoughts?
Well, as I mentioned on Gillis Road, we've seen Palmer Drive quite a bit in the last few years, and we've seen a change in the, in the structures. We've gone from small stuff to big stuff really consistently. I would be inclined to go with Dave Nixon and Ginny with this, with the exception that we really do have some large homes across the street, that we have, some of which we've approved, some of which preexisted, such that I think that, given the comment that Dave Veach made about the perspective that you have of the ins and outs of the building, which is not conveyed so well by these particular drawings, that this probably would fit in with what's across the street in terms of overall size and volume. So I think on that basis, I would vote to approve.
All right. So I'm not voting, which is probably a good thing for you, because I agree with Mr. Nixon and Ginny. I also think that the house across the street, well, sort of like diagonal, it's not a much bigger lot, and I, you know, I think this is a really important street, and we outlined that before, we've had drama series for Palmer Drive here, and we, we're always trying to keep that street traditional, you know, and we only have so much to say about design, but I think that this design is, has too much mass, and I would not vote in favor if I had been voting. I think that they could try to come back with something with more traditional dormers, because I think it stands out, and I do think that this is an important street, and I, we'll have to see how, would you like us to take a straw vote to see how Ginny and Dave are going to vote?
Sure.
And then you could always come back within, you know, in less than two years. So Ginny, how, how would you vote?
I don't, I, I do think it's too much mass, so I would, I would not support it.
And Dave Veach, you would, right?
Yeah, I indicated that I could support it.
And Mr. Nixon, you wouldn't? No? So that's two, and you need four. Paul, you would?
I would support it.
And Lee would?
Yeah, I would support it.
Yeah, so you needed more than that.
Right.
So you want? So you want to come back another day?
Well, of course. Right. But I do think that, yeah, I knew it was gonna be the dormers, and I thought about trying to take the clear-story windows off the, over the top to make it look, but, but I think what I said originally is that it's not a massive. It's only two bedrooms upstairs, it's not a McMansion, and although the detailing makes it look a little bit over-massed, I think, I think when it was built, you'd probably never notice it. So, there we go.
All right. So when do you, when work, Sarah?
George, would you like, how long will it take you to redesign? Are you looking to continue or withdraw?
Probably, I would think we could do it in three or four weeks. Is that possible?
How does December 4th sound?
December?
Fourth.
Ah, so far in the future, I can't possibly know.
We're awful busy, that's why.
Yeah, it's before Christmas. I can do it, yes. December 4th?
On November 20th. It's up to Sarah, 'cause, you know...
I mean, we have to continue to a date specific. Currently, we have four applications already on our November 20th agenda and one on our December 4th.
Whatever is convenient for the board.
Good answer.
It's up to you guys.
Well?
I'll move to grant the request to continuance to December 4, 2025.
Davey seconds and votes yes.
Yes.
All vote yes.
I vote yes.
Ginny votes yes.
Okay. It's unanimous. We'll see you next time.
All right, bye-bye.
All right, then. Looks like we just need a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
Davey seconds and votes yes.
Ed votes yes. Ed votes yes.
Yes.
All vote yes.
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 And yes. And what time is it?
3:07 PM.
How do you like that? Good night, Chatham.